Okay, we're ready.
Hey, hello, everybody. I hope you all had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday and everything. Everyone I've talked to, it's always the same story, was small group, but good food. So I hope that was the case for everybody. Let's call the meeting to order at 5:31 PM. And if we could have Jeannie do roll call.
Yes, I had to shut my door. Craig Borba.
Here.
Melissa Cronin.
Here.
Juanita Gardner.
Here.
David Kelly.
Here.
Ed McBride.
Here.
All here.
Do you talk to us about the acceptance of the agenda, please?
The agenda was posted according to law on or before November 25.
Do we have any public comments?
I was gonna prove that we accept the agenda.
Do we normally, what's on there? But when do we start accepting the agenda?
That's, that's protocol.
Okay. Then I have a motion.
Yeah, we added that recently when we revised the agenda.
Take your moment. Okay, can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
Oh, second.
And that was who? I'm sorry.
Juanita.
Juanita. All in favor?
Roll call.
Do roll call. Craig Borba.
Yes.
Melissa Cronin.
Yes.
Gardner. Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Ed McBride.
Yes.
Mention is approved.
Thank you. Now, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
All right, the consent agenda, was there anything, can I get a motion to accept, or did we need to pull anything off of the consent agenda, anyone? Okay, so we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from our November 4th in the library statistics that Jeannie submitted.
I'll move. I'll second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Melissa. Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa. Craig, second.
Yes.
Roll call.
I'm just gonna put it right here. Craig Borba.
Yes.
Melissa Cronin.
Yes.
Juanita Gardner.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Ed McBride.
Yes.
It is approved.
Thank you. Nancy, as long as you will not run over some pedestrian or have an accident, would you like to talk to us about the Friends and what you guys are up to?
Sure. We had a meeting and our next meeting is next Tuesday. But our last meeting, we basically just, you know, got an update from the library to see what was going on. And we're so excited about them being open. And I happened to use the library GoGo and it worked out great. Jeannie, it was very easy, very fast, safe. I really liked it. But as for the Friends themselves, we are just trying to get different ways, different ideas on raising money. And we put on our website about Giving Tuesday. What we're hoping is that people, and we're hoping that the foundation and the trustees will join in with this, that if you could give a gift of a library membership, you would receive $10 in appreciation bucks, bucks, excuse me, bucks that you can spend on books. But so we're just hoping that everyone will think of at least one person that they could give a library, Friends of the Library, membership to. And we're just revamping our website somewhat. And basically, just, we're gonna be sending out a, well, we're gonna wait a bit, but eventually we'll be sending out a giving letter as well. But basically, that was it for the meeting. We're just looking for new ways to interact with the members. And we're really looking for ways that perhaps we could do a book sale, because a lot of people want to. And we will take a box of books for donations if any of them have them. We can do one box at a time from anybody who wants to donate books. But we have a lot of people who really want to buy the books. So we're excited about the library being open, that somebody can make an appointment and go in there and spend 45 minutes and buy off the shelves. But we really would like to find a way to have a bigger book sale. So we're looking at the possibilities about that. That's about it.
Thank you. Any questions for Nancy?
Nancy, when do you think the book sale would be? January, February?
Well, you know, we're kind of, with all this surge that's going on and with the vaccine coming out, hopefully, I think we're kind of in a wait and see momentum at the time to see what's happening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question for Nancy?
I have a comment. I think, Nancy, that's a great idea, the idea to sponsor a membership for somebody you know, because a lot of people who are members may not really go out and tell their friends to become members of the Friends of the Palm Springs Library. And I think that's a, you know, it's not that expensive to become a member. I think it's what, $20, $25?
Yes, $20.
I mean, you could actually, you know, bundle a few people together and say, hi, I'm doing this for the holidays. I think that's a great idea.
Good, thank you. We appreciate it. And plus, you get $10 in return that you can spend on books. Such a deal.
Nancy? If you buy someone's membership, will the following year, will that member get a reminder that?
Oh, yes.
They do? Okay, good, thank you.
Yes, yes. Yeah, you're not committed to life for giving for that person.
But I just wanna make sure they rejoin.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, we wouldn't let them just slide. Don't worry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Unless you're a really kind person and you wanna pay for them going forward.
Yeah, life, yeah. Anybody else?
And their website, their website is friendsofthepalmspringslibrary.org.
I just wanted to say that, you know, maybe with the new website developments, it could be a book sale element on the actual site, or something that I'm seeing a lot of people doing for fundraisers and sales right now are sales through Facebook, where you can post pictures of the books and then somebody would comment, I wanna buy that, or sold. You could do kind of like a little promotion throughout the day that way. Just some of the things that people are doing at this time for that kind of thing.
Good idea.
Rotary's doing an online auction to raise money. So I think that this, once again, is capturing photographs of items to auction and hopefully they'll make some money as well.
Right. And we have talked about doing a silent auction. We do have some, I don't know exactly what they are. Sure, I shouldn't even mention it, some kind of books that are evidently pretty valuable or something that we're thinking of putting in baskets and maybe rattling them off. We have all different kinds of ideas that we're tossing out there. We are getting on with eBay to do more eBay sales.
Yeah, I think one of your big successes is that you've actually been selling books despite this COVID process.
Right.
That's amazing.
Right. But just think how much more we'd have if we had either a big sale or, you know, we used to do a couple of thousand months just off the shelves. So we're really missing that income. So we're trying to find other ways to generate it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you all. I hope you all have a wonderful holiday.
You too.
You too, Nancy.
Thank you.
Library Foundation, no one here to report on that, right, Jeannie?
No, they're not here.
Okay, so I can share what I know, then if you guys would like to know. So the Library Foundation has taken some steps in lieu of having a capital campaign on the horizon. They met and decided that let's make hay and at least raise some money and start some fundraising for some other projects. So at the last meeting, it was decided to do a couple of things that I think is pretty exciting. In the meantime, the foundation applied for a $10,000 grant on the county when they were giving money away during COVID. It was given to them. And at the last meeting, we gave it to Jeannie. So Jeannie got $10,000 and she can tell you guys what she's using that money for. So that's, that's very exciting. It was, everyone was very happy to pass that money on to her for her project. So Jeannie, what, you wanna tell everybody what you're buying with that $10,000?
Sure, we're going to start a mobile hotspot lending program. And it's gonna be a small program, but it's a, it's a great start. And we will circulate hotspots, just like we do books. And so someone could check it out and it will be Wi-Fi at home, or Wi-Fi to go, or something like that. But so essentially, it'll be about 25 hotspots that we'll be able to lend. And it's an unlimited data plan. And so then people, you know, a lot of people, they have a smartphone, might have data restrictions and get throttled down or whatnot. Who doesn't have hotspots? But there are a lot of adults that might not have Wi-Fi or might not be able to afford internet. So you can borrow a hotspot, use it for a couple of weeks. Then the next person can have it. So we're gonna, we're gonna experiment and try this program out.
The, the foundation also met with library strategists again to talk about, you know, in these times of COVID, what are other foundations doing around the country? And so based on their advice, they met with a firm called Carl Bloom. Carl Bloom is a group that focuses on raising money for library foundations around the country, and they've had a lot of success doing that. They decided to hire them to do an end of year giving campaign. And everyone came to go, the fundraising committee has found, or has created a list of over 600 potential donors in our community to do this initial campaign with. And that was just asking foundation members to, hey, give us your list, who do you know that we could put on there? And they have set a goal of, you know, at least making more than what it costs to do the campaign, which is about $3,000. But the foundation has set a priority for fundraising over the next probably year. The first thing is they wanna pay back the $80,000 they owe the trustees. That's their first priority. And then working with Jeannie, they threw out some ideas to her about what would be some other things they could focus on, like an endowment or other programs or technology. So I think that's gonna be a follow-up once this campaign is completed. The campaign consultants said they, they would be very surprised if we don't make some money from this, based on the list that we provided. They produced the artwork for us, the webpage artwork, the letter itself. And last time I heard, everything is on order to go out here in the next week or so. So each of you will be getting one naturally. So you'll see the, the letter come to you in both an email and there'll be some physical letters. And then they've contracted with Bloom to do a spring campaign and a fall campaign. So they are, hopefully, this one will be successful. And Bloom is gonna come back and make some suggestions around what they can do for them. But they definitely said they wanted to do a campaign in the spring and the fall. So I think that's all the foundation report that I, that I have. Jeannie, did I miss something in that last meeting? I don't think so, right?
Sounds complete.
Okay. Any, any questions for me?
I've got a comment and a question. I just wanna say, first of all, that sounds like great, all of that news that you just gave, sounded really interesting. And I'm glad that the foundation has found a partner like Carl Bloom to actually help with their efforts. And and it's interesting to hear that Library Strategies is still involved with the foundation. So that's, that's good to hear, too. My question actually had to deal with the, a couple of months ago, we'd asked when Jeannie had asked about the trustees funding some new equipment for sorting library books at the library. And we had asked her to approach the foundation about that because of, you know, it looked like the foundation was looking for fundraising goals. So I wanted to get maybe a little bit of information about that, as well as whether or not the $10,000 that you did receive was earmarked for specific purposes because of the grant for.
Yeah, so there's a couple of questions there, Trustee Kelly. So let me start with the last one. The grant that we got from the county had to benefit the community in some way. And when we asked Jeannie, you know, her list, she, she mentioned the equipment for the sorting machine, right, Jeannie? That's, that's the technology.
We did discuss that, yes.
Versus this one, which would be, since we're not circulating a lot of books right now, getting technology to people, which seems, and I'm speaking for you, Jeannie, please jump in and correct me. She felt that was a higher priority. So that's, we gave that money to her to spend in that area. And I think that we put the other requests aside, right, Jeannie, until, right?
Yeah, the Library Foundation, we talked about the grant and it was, it's a CARES Act grant, or like a COVID grant. And it, the foundation wrote the grant to help bring more literacy to the community. And we talked about books and actually supporting our books and purchasing new books. And we debated about the digital divide and how a lot of people don't have access to technology at home. And so we debated back and forth. And, and the foundation chose to go with the digital technology to work on digital literacy. So it is a literacy style grant, but it's for technology. And then we talked about the sorting system and the foundation passed on on supporting that.
Is that just at this time, or is that future they're concerned about that?
So the, we told Jeannie, she can come back and ask for anything she wants anytime, but she can ask this group as well. So we didn't say no, but we didn't say yes in that vote. We wanted to give that grant to her for this particular purpose. So I think that if she feels the need to come back and ask any three groups for anything she wants, it really is back into her court.
Jeannie, what was the price on the sorting machine?
$27,000.
And so am I to understand that the foundation already has a list of projects that the library has requested, or potential library projects that any of the marketing materials that you and Bloom are working on for the next couple of months are gonna actually start mentioning, or how is that process gonna work?
So you'll see in the letter, it basically, this end of year giving campaign is talking about what we've been able to, what, not we, but what the library has been able to accomplish in the community during the COVID times, and what a great gift it is to our community. Would we like to raise more money to help them achieve more goals? The, the foundation said to Jeannie that, you know, once we see how this money comes in, as they said, the top priority, they wanna pay the money back to the, to the, to the trust fund. And then work with her to come up with a list of priorities that she wants to have funded from there. So I think that that's coming, but we just haven't gotten to that point yet, right, Jeannie?
Right. And we're really in a brainstorming mode with the foundation. We want, I'm speaking for myself, and I'm, well, I'll speak for you, Ed. I think that the foundation needs to have a unique voice in fundraising for the library. So the Friends of the Library have a unique voice of their own. And so we want the two groups to be complementary to each other and it to be clear on what, what the fundraising goals are of the two groups, so that they aren't stepping on each other's goals, or goals toes. Yeah.
Goals is a good point. I agree.
Yeah. So that's what's going on right now. We're, we're, they're trying to earn some money and see what they get and, and then see where we can put it.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna labor this too much longer, but I would certainly encourage that if the foundation hasn't set aside particular goals that are actually pending, like the library sorter, that they might actually consider doing that, because it's, you know, as I, I have no reason to believe that that's not a priority for the library, especially when it reopens eventually, which we know it's going to in 2021. And and, you know, as far as the trustees are concerned, I think we should, you know, we're, you know, when we actually work with the foundation and with the Friends of the Library, one of the things that we're interested in doing is actually helping with these projects. So I think the $80,000 that's outstanding was to be able to help the foundation in its fundraising efforts to provide things like the sorting machine. So when I hear that the repayment of the loan is a priority over a machine that helps, a very important process for the library, I'm, I'm not certain that that's really that important.
So the, the foundation, in their discussions, they're about $5,000 shy of being able to pay the $80,000 back. So they're hoping this end of year will push them well over that, so that they can finally pay the money back to the trustees. Then whatever is left over, they will work, of course, with Jeannie on what is the priorities and what does she need. So I think that discussion is coming. I just think that they feel that it's, they wanna get out from under owing the debt to the, to the trustees. And I agree, it's with Jeannie, that the sentiment that I got was that they wanna make sure it's a unique voice, it's a unique area, and also look at the reasons they were founded. I mean, clearly, they were founded to raise money for a building. Well, that's not gonna happen anytime soon. So what is next in their priorities is, you know, considered, I think, a discussion the foundation board has to have. So yeah, did you disagree with that, Jeannie? Do you think I'm?
No, that sounds exactly right.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Jeannie, library staff report.
Okay. So Trustee Kelly mentioned that this a little bit about when the library reopened. So the library has reopened for appointments only. And we're doing a soft opening, so we didn't do a full press release. We're just working through the process to make sure that we have everything in place that's safe and that will streamline the customer experience and help keep everybody safe, both the customers and the library staff. So we're open to indoor service now by appointment only. We have sessions that are 45 minutes in length, so they start at the top of the hour and go until 45 minutes after the hour. And then that gives us a 15-minute window for everybody to make their way to the exit and us to clean up and reset the library. And we encourage customers to come in and make their selections expeditiously. We want the customers, and they have been. We want them to not spend a lot of time here, because it's, as we know, we're in a worldwide pandemic and it's safer to be at home. So come in and get your items and enjoy them outside the library. So we have sessions, we are doing the pickup service still, and that's super popular. And like Nancy Morrison said, it is a wonderful process. We're happy to help people find items. We'll pick, we'll pick them for you off the shelf, check them out to you and set it on the table right outside the door. So you don't even have to come inside. You can send your printing mobile, we have a mobile printing service, which we've had for a long time, but you can email us your, your printing and pick up the prints at the door also. We're doing craft kits. I'll tell you all about our craft kits. It's a lot of fun. And so you can come in, you can use the computers. Again, we just, we have a limit, one, one time per day. And that's just to keep everyone safe. Masks are mandatory. You must wear your mask and when you're inside the library. We have had 200, we opened, we did a soft opening, like I said, November 16th. So we've been open a couple of weeks. We've had 230 people come inside the library in November. We also served, in the month of November, we served 1,083 people through our pickup service. Which those two numbers put together equals how many pickup service appointments we had in October. So a couple hundred people decided to come inside and get their items. We have been still doing our virtual storytimes on Facebook Live at 10:00 AM on Thursdays. And our teen live events are on Thursdays at 4:00 PM. And since there are very few teens on Facebook, we have moved those to Instagram Live. And we'll see if we can get the teens over on Instagram to watch Sean Corbin's little videos each week. They're very interesting, all different, every week is unique. This month, we're doing Craft Along and it's a gingerbread house kit. It's on Facebook and YouTube now. And we have kits available and those are very popular, we're happy to say. And the Friends of the Library are sponsoring all of our supplies for our virtual programs. So thank you to the Friends of the Library. So gingerbread kits are available for pickup now through the end of the month, or while supplies last. I think we have to go to the store and get more stuff. Our teens are doing a bristle bot robot event. And those crafts are going to be available starting December 14th. I think that's right, December 14th is what I have written down. So Sean will be doing a demonstration. It's basically an electric toothbrush broken up and turned into a little and Dollar Tree is your friend when it comes to dollar toothbrushes. Our adult program goes live tomorrow. And I will tell you, this program, the, the video on this one is just beautiful. It's Holiday Bow Making by Yurani Navarro. She's our in-house decorator at the library. So if you see anything magical and beautiful at the library, she probably did it or had a hand in decorating it. So we, we recorded that video yesterday and she did instructions on at least five different styles of bows. So that video premieres tomorrow afternoon at 2 o'clock and it's on YouTube and it will be on Facebook also. And finally, the city's website has been updated. It's the same web address, but the city's website has a new look and things are, it just went live yesterday, I think. So give us some time to make, we work to make sure it's, it's there. And we're gonna do a little more tweaking on it, but it looks, it looks really nice. It's a blue and yellow color palette. So it's a little different than the orange and green palette that was before. So everything, all the web addresses, all the links are pretty much the same place. It's just a new style, new design. So that's exciting for us. We have new, new features that we can add to it as we go along. So I am happy to answer any questions, but that's my report. I guess I should say also, the library will be closed December 24th and 25th. I'm not used to saying library will be closed. But we'll be closed for those two days for the holiday. And New Year's Day.
Thanks. I actually have a question. So when people are actually, I think when I went online, I noticed that there was a reservation system for people coming into the library. So for people who don't have access to laptops or a phone, that they can make the reservation. You know, typically, I think that the drill used to be with, like for computer reservations, that you could actually come into the library and go online, make your reservation, whatever. Is something similar like that being set up for making a reservation in the library?
Well, we've simplified, that, yes, they could come in and set up a reservation using our public computers, but even more simple than that, they can call us at 760-322-READ, or just walking up to the door. We'll have someone at the door that can explain the process. And either if we're open during that time, if they show up during an actual active session and there are available spots, we could just let them in. And so as an example, if you show up at 10:15 and the session ends at 10:45, you would get about 30 minutes to come inside. And like I said, people have been very quick. They come in, they get their stuff and they get out. And then they're gone in about 10 minutes. So it's, it's nice. But yeah, they could just come up, come to the door. Our library hours for Monday through Thursday are 10 to 6:00. And Friday and Saturday, they're 10 to 5:00. And we're doing sessions starting next week. They're gonna be every hour at the top of the hour. We, we did get funding approval to bring back our security guard. So we're, we're relieved to have the extra person. So we're, we're relieved to have the extra person. Because we did, a couple of people resigned last month. We had a, a part-time library assistant resign and a one-fourth quarter time, .25 library page resign. And those positions are currently just on unfilled, they're not unfunded, they're just on hold. So we're short and so we got approval to get the guard instead. So right now, we're going to get the security guard and, and that person's going to help us at the door as well.
And how is that working out with the, the city in terms of, you know, now that they're realizing that they're able to hire some more people like the, the guard and the firemen and some police officers? How's that going as far as your budget's concerned? Because I remember where they passed a two-year budget, obviously, one, one whole year that had to be left out. Is what's the talk about, what's going to happen? Is there going to be a new budget reconciliation? Or is everyone going to just wait until they find out who David Reddy's replacement is?
I'm not, I, I can't speak for sure about the process, but I do know that in January or February, I believe that this, the city will probably approach council for budget reconciliation or some additional funding. And so if none of my donor groups step up for, I mean, I didn't mean that in a bad way. If nobody finds our book sorting system upgrade, I'm going to take that to the city. So that's going to be included in that request. But I will tell you, the book sorting system, we are really struggling, we're down to one self-check. The machine's not working right, everything's kind of collapsing in on itself technology-wise. So we're limping along, but we do have one self-check working and that's adequate for helping customers. So we're, we're able to help customers in that way.
Right, so you've got, you've got the city council, it's coming up in terms of budget reconciliations, probably in January, February, that you're going to make requests for. And then probably Measure J will also, you might want to make, you're going to plan on making some requests to them as well for some of these items?
I'll, I wait for the city to tell me about what can be asked.
Okay.
They, the, you know, the city has priorities.
Jeannie, are, are those two positions that became open, are they frozen or are they going through the hiring process?
They're just, they're, they're on hold. So they are technically funded, funded, open positions, but they are just being held at this time. So when that hold is let up, then they would go through the hiring process.
Okay, thank you.
It's kind of, they're not, they're not unfunded and they're not frozen, they're just in the middle.
Okay.
It's complicated, temporarily on hold.
Any more questions for Jeannie or comments? Thanks, Jeannie. Treasurer's report, trustee Kelly.
Yeah, Jeannie, could you put up the, the numbers for me? Thanks. I think page 10 or 11, I think are the ones that I need. Oh, you can stop there, yeah. So our cash balance is $1,846.817. So the items that actually affected that, you can go to the next page. A partly an interest allocation of $16,374.96 that was credited to our cash. This number is bigger than it was last year, last year at the same time, it was about $10,000, $10,440.24. And then you can see that the debits that we have here in the second column that says periodic expenditure. So there's $112,606.97 for Wellwood Patio, $1,000 that came out of the, the PR library campaign. So we had $113,606.97 cents debits for the period. So that's why we have our million eight figure. I just have one question for you, Jeannie, while you're on this page. It does say that there's $34,701.39 in encumbrances outstanding in the third column, which when you add it together with $112,000 that was spent, equals our budget of $147,000. But for some reason, if you go all the way to the last column, it says, I'm sorry, I have my something, it's my way here, so. So in the available balance, it says zero. So how is that, that, that's zero and not $34,701.39?
But the way the city handles these accounts is that when there's a purchase order created or a project created, like this Wellwood Patio, they have a dollar amount set aside. And they have actual bills paid versus bills that are waiting to be paid. And $34,000 is money that they expect to come in as a bill.
Okay.
Encumber it and they set it aside.
Okay.
So that we don't overspend. And so that money is set aside, it just has not been paid. And this, these monthly reports that come out, this is the fourth month of the fiscal year, so July, August, September, October. So this is the October statement. It's always, our meetings are at the, the very first of the month. So to get a full report, a full month report, we have to do almost two months old. So this is October's.
Right. Yeah, I think I follow what you're saying. So I don't know if anybody else has any questions on that. It's just that, I guess, at some point, we'll see the $34,701.39 come out of our cash balances as well, but it's not happened yet.
All right, I expect that to go up on that one.
Jeannie, what, what, what is encumbered in that $34,000?
You know, I'm not sure, it's just the, it's the, the entire construction project for the Wellwood Patio. And I know the, the budget, the project's budget was more than $147,000. So it, it, I'm not sure, they're just going to pay the bills for the project. It could be anything, it could be construction, labor, part.
But all related to the Wellwood?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I believe if you, if you go to the city council agendas, there is probably a cost breakdown of that Wellwood Patio project. Because I know, I don't know if they took it to the last meeting, I think they did a project completion report.
Great, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to accept? I'll move a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Yes.
Melissa Cronin?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Ed McBride?
Yes.
All approved.
So our next item is 7A, the analysis of the fiscal year 2020 library board endowment from trustee Kelly, once again.
I'll share my screen again.
Thank you.
Let me find the page. There we go. Can you see that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so in this report, what I was just endeavoring to do is to just give us some direction as to what we did with the endowment for the past year. So as you can see, from the starting balance to the ending balance that are reported there, there was a $58,294.91 difference between the two. And there were major expenditures, total major expenditures of $110,478.72, which you can see consisted of books, strategic planning spending, the PR for the, the PR library campaign and money spent on the Wellwood Patio. And those, those expenditures that you can see in the text were offset primarily from a $10,000 reduction in the loan payable by the library foundation, of which $80,000 is due and payable on July 1st, 2022, and interest income. And then if you scroll up a little bit more, you can see what the interest income had been in the two years. In 2019, we had $36,694.73. Last year, we had $31,132. So we had a, a difference of $5,561 between the two years, which I put down as a 15.2% reduction in income. I don't have any information from the city as to what their earned rate was in 2020, but I reported before that the earned rate was 1.8% in the prior year. And it's, and I wrote here that it is likely that the cause of the decrease in interest income in fiscal year 2020 is due to falling rates caused primarily by the COVID pandemic and decreased economic activity. So going through the, the, the rough numbers, again, with the beginning balance of the endowment, which was $1,989, and taking out the major expenditures of $110,000, adding the interest income or taking, yes, adding the interest income and adding the foundation repayment, I came up with an approximate ending balance of $1,926, which is only off by the actual ending balance of about $4,000. And I note that if we were actually doing an audit of these numbers, we'd probably get a lot closer than my figures. But I'm satisfied that these figures satisfactory present the fiscal year 2020 financial activity of the library board endowment. And available for any questions?
Thank you for the analysis. I think this is the best we, in my years of being on the board, this, this is really one of the best reports that we've had. We'll be very focused on this picture, so thank you. Any questions for trustee Kelly?
Yeah, David, when we're looking at this, we're looking at fiscal year, so it's 2019, 2020. We're covering that part, correct?
We're just talking about fiscal year 2020. In the, just a little scrolling up from where we are now. The only thing that I said for fiscal year 2019 was just the interest figure, just to compare what was hap, what happened in a prior fiscal year compared to this fiscal year. So I don't go into details about the fiscal year 2019 in this report.
No, I was thinking that when we're talking fiscal year, we're talking that it covers six months of 2019 and six months of 2020, correct?
No, fiscal year is referring to the city's fiscal year. So the fiscal year begins July 1st and ends June 30th. So if you're talking about calendar, you have six months of the calendar year 2019 and six months of the calendar year 2020, then yes, I agree with you there.
Thank you.
I just want to echo what trustee McBride said and thank you for the analysis and the transparency that this brings, both for us and for members of the general public that will have access to this. I do, I am, you know, interested and slightly concerned about the interest rate that you mentioned. And I know that we spoke a couple of months ago about trying to get some more information from the city about the nature of the investments or how our money is mixed in with other funds there and things like that. And I would be interested to know if Jeannie or if there's a way that we can get some more explanation from them about the changing of the interest rate and to, to be sure and to know, you know, if we would be able to get a better rate potentially somewhere else on our own. Just to at least know when there's a reduction like that, why it happened and if it's truly inevitable.
Well, I would say, right off the top of my head, is that I would certainly invite you or any, or Juanita, our newest board members, if you would like to consider, as we rejigger the, the board of trustees next year in terms of our committee assignments, if you'd like to participate in the budget committee, I think it would be great to, to have you and our treasurer, should I get re-elected, come back to the city and have a conversation about what had happened in the prior fiscal year and, and just get another update. Because it has been, you know, a year and a half, I think, since we actually sat down and talked to the city treasurer. So that would be, that would be my recommendation.
Sounds great.
I mean, we, we have the freedom at any time if we wanted to take this money and put it somewhere else, right, Jeannie? I mean, it's never been that we're, I mean, it's just there were decisions made historically to move it back to the city at one point. And I think that we revisited those and, and that was pre-COVID discussions. So I agree, I think it would be appropriate for our next financial board to look at it again and have a conversation with the city.
This, the library trust fund has always been with the city, that's my understanding. But the trustees have had some, some active participation in the investments that were made, even while it was held at the city. I would recommend to you, yeah, the finance department's always happy to share their investment strategy. And they, most of that, I'm looking at their website, it should be on their website, some of their investment policy and their reports, their accountant's reports and their audits and things. So the information is probably on the website because we're striving to always be transparent with these sorts of things.
By looking at our returns, it seems like our investments are extremely, extremely conservative. And we're not keeping up with the economy.
I agree with trustee Kelly that it's definitely worth the conversation because I know, you know, some people managed to do well this year despite everything that's going on, so it's worth looking at.
Yeah, I mean, for no other reason, as I reported in my treasurer's report earlier this evening, to see that the interest accrual for this year, the first quarter, is $16,000 compared to $10,000 last year. Very interesting.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you again, trustee Kelly, for a great report. Can I get a motion to accept this report?
I'll move.
A second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Craig Borba?
Yes.
Melissa Cronin?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Ed McBride?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. So it's that time of year where we start talking about planning for our next year. And it's time for the president to appoint a nominating committee to look at our slate of officers. Jeannie reminded me, of course, as you guys can see from the agenda, that our committees don't reflect our two as new members, but we discussed at the last meeting that we might as well get our new officers and then start all over again, which we normally do in January. So at the next meeting, we kind of consider that to be our working meeting. And so what will happen is the nominating committee will get the agreement from the president-elect, who will come to that meeting with some pre-planning done with what would be a slate of committees so that you can sign up for your committees or there may be some assignments from the president-elect. But it kind of gets the year kicked off at that first meeting on what we need to do going forward. I think that based on where we are now compared to where we've been in the past, that our standing committees, which are dictated by the bylaws, is worth discussing and meeting. I mean, we, we're not the same board we were this time last year for all kinds of reasons, considering the 2020 year. So there might be some things that we might feel as priorities that we want to either So there might be some things that we might feel as priorities that we want to either add to the list of of committees or maybe add an ad hoc or put something off to rest for a while because it's not priority. So I I kind of leave that with everyone to think about. And I would like to ask trustee Kelly and trustee Borba to serve as the nominating committee. If you would accept that and start working on a new slate of officers and reach out to those people that you would nominate to get their agreement. So if that's okay, I think that we would have our nominating committee.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Wonderful. Thank you guys for accepting that. All right. So Jeanie, you put on here, you wanted to discuss some of the conflicts with the the meeting dates, I guess, for the calendar year twenty twenty-one. Is that right?
Right. I just, we had this on here last year, last December, and it's probably a good time to talk about it and see if there's anything that's upcoming before we continue on with the rest of this year. So if you have any conflicts, I don't, I don't see any conflicts, but it's always good to have a discussion item about it in case you do.
So
and, you know, if we're on Zoom, we don't have to worry about being a room.
So our next meeting would be on January the sixth, correct?
I think that's correct. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
The first Wednesday in January.
Yes.
Okay, and
I think Juanita has a question.
I actually have a conflict on that day. It's so funny that you chose that. That is the epiphany. It's a big celebration in our house.
Yeah.
It's, I don't know that we're going to have any, you know, gathering, but we're going to do something. So whether we do something on Zoom or whatever it is, it is a, you know, deliver gifts to family members. It is kind of a big day at my house. So I wouldn't be able to participate in that meeting. And it sounds like that's a meeting we need to all be at, right?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
I don't know if there's
How flexible are we with changing the date, Jeanie? I know when, back in the days when we were like trying to have these meetings at City Hall, that was like a real juggling act. But since we're on Zoom, does it really make much of a difference?
The, this is, Zoom is wonderful because, like I said, we don't have to reserve a room. The only conflicts I have to watch for are book clubs that are hosted by the library because we share the same Zoom account. That would be it. So I
What would you think, Juanita? What's what's the, your, what's your schedule that week? What's it looking like? Is it just that Wednesday?
It would just be that Wednesday because if, you know, it's probably going to be like gift deliveries and and that's what I would be doing Wednesday afternoon would be delivering. So I could do Tuesday, I could do Thursday. That would be fine.
Probably Thursday would be better for you, right? So that you could be past the, it would be past you then, right?
That's true. That's true.
Thursday would be better for me too than Tuesday.
I don't have a conflict in my calendar for January seventh.
I I think that the seventh makes sense, especially it being a religious observance. Why not? So we want to make our next meeting then for January the seventh. Then what we could do, Jeanie, at that meeting is give everybody the time to come prepared to then discuss these conflicts, looking at the year ahead for the rest of the year. So if you guys could look at your calendars, you know, and you have vacations or you have, you know, there's festivities going on, which are not a lot right now. But if we come to that meeting, maybe then we can say, if we assume we're going to stay with the first Tuesday at five thirty, five thirty is a time we're stuck with, basically, right? We have to do that because
Wednesday.
that's the city requirement. So, I'm sorry, Wednesday. But we could look at our calendars going forward to see if there's anything that conflicts.
And it's not the last time you can discuss it. If something comes up, we're flexible and we can all discuss it as a group and and adjust if something happens later.
I think that this next meeting is critical because it's kind of our working kickoff meeting. Going forward, now that we're, we have a full board, in the past, there were three of us there for a while. So if we lost somebody, we just, we couldn't do anything, right? Now that we're back up to speed, if we, if one of you said, I just can't make it, as long as I think it's at one, we still could have a quorum and we would be okay. Not that we want anybody to miss, we'd miss anybody, but you know, that is always a fallback. But if it becomes more than one, I think we definitely have to reschedule so we keep our quorum. It'd be my opinion, right?
Yeah, so we would send, we would change the next meeting to January seventh at five thirty. It's a Thursday. Okay.
Twenty twenty-one can't get here fast enough. Do I get an amen on that?
Amen.
Nice to be talking about twenty twenty-one, isn't it? Okay. Any trustees to have comments, future agenda items anyone would like to talk about?
I was just wondering if on that committee, just to make it sound more of, what it's going to be doing is maybe it could be budget slash investments?
Sure.
You okay with that, Dave?
Well, according to your bylaws, though, it is a budget committee, I think. I don't know if you have the name.
I mean, it would require some sort of a, it could, we could always do an investment ad hoc committee to work with, because ad hoc has more flexibility unless we want to do a bylaw change.
You're right. You're right.
So we, there's no reason, or we could say that the budget committee has a focus in the year twenty twenty-one of looking at investments, but there's ways around that.
Yeah, I just don't want that issue to be lost.
Absolutely. Anything else? Any other thoughts? Okay. Thank all of you for your time and your service this year. It's been one of those years that I think that we'll hopefully never see again. I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-one with all of our organizations helping us help Jeanie achieve her goals and objectives. And I hope all of you have great holidays. So I'd like to adjourn the meeting officially at six twenty-eight.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Everybody stay safe, please.
Happy holidays.
All of you, please stay safe.